कथुरिया परिशुद्ध नामद्विके महिमा उड़ाव राहय
Glory be to God's holy name
अपोसलर्डे नरबड़ीकल 27 मदिकारम
Let us turn to Book of Acts chapter 27
41 वसनंगले वासिकलाम
And verses 40 and 41 नंगूरंगले आरत्त कडलिले विट्टिविट्टि सुक्कानकुर्डिये कट्टुगले तलरविट्टि परुम्पाईये काट्च मुहमाइ विरुत्ति करेक्कु नेराइ ओडि इरुपुरमुम कडलमोदिये वरु एडत्तिले कप्पले तट्टवैतार्क मुन्नणियम ऊंडी असयामले रुद्दनु पिन्नणियम अलैकल्डिये बलत्तिनाल उडेंदु पोइचु committed themselves unto the sea and loosed the rooder bands and hoisted up the main sail to the wind and made towards shore and failing into a place where two seas met they ran the ship aground and the four parts stuck fast and remained immovable but the hinder part was broken with the violence of the waves
कथुरिया परिशुद्ध नामद्विके महिमा उड़ाव राहय
Glory be to God's holy name
इंदे कप्पल पायनतिले ओर अपोसलन इरुक्रान
In this voyage there is an apostle
अनेक पोर चेवगर्गले रुद्दा राख
Many soldiers were there
अनेक वेलयाक्कले रुद्दा राख
Many workmen were there
इवनोड़ चैंदे अनेक अकुट्टावालिगले सराई पट्टा वर्गले रुद्दा राख
Along with them those in present accused were there
इब्बी पालरुम चैरंदे ओर कप्पल पायनतिले पोइकोंड रुद्दा राख
Likewise so many together they were in a voyage
इंदे कप्पल एप्पडिया इंदे कप्पलिले पोगुरदाना इंदे अपोसलनके ओर वांजय उड़द
This apostle who was in a voyage had a desire
इलावटाल अवनको ओर वेंड्ड्डल उड़द
Or he had a petition
एनंदाल अवन यार्कनावे अदरकमुन्बाक विसारने सेदरु रुद्दले अभयम उड़करकरान
Because they had already cried out unto those who had worked there
एन्ना अभयम उड़करकरान
What was their cry?
नान रायर कमुन्बाक निर्क्कवेंडम
I should stand before Caesar
एन्दो ओर एडत्तलो ओर कुट्टावाली अंद्रकी अंदर रोमा सांभराज्जित्तिले नान रायन का अभयम उड़करण निंद चोली विट्टाल अदरकपि न्बु अवने नियायम विसारिके एन्द नियायादि विरिक्युम तकुति कड़ेयाद
In that Roman Empire if any accused would cry out saying I should go to Caesar then no judge has the right to judge
अन्न विल्लिनली इवनु अंदर कुट्टावालियाक नेमिक्के पट्टरंद ओर नैरत्तिले तने कुंड्रुडु वार्गले निच्ये वंद उड़ुद इवन नान रायन का अभयम उड़करण निंद चोली विट्टान
Therefore he too when he was in present being accused and when he was about to die he cried out saying I should stand before Caesar
रायन निंद चोन्नाल ओर सर्व अधिकारम पडेत ओर आय
Caesar was an umpa man with power
अंदर पेर यूज़ पनि डाले अदरकपर्ग अवन अंदर मंशने यार्मी एन्कोरीम पन्नमुड्याद जज्मोड्यु पन्नमुड्याद
A man with superpower if any man would use his name then none else can judge the person
अन्न विल्लिनली इप्पुलुद रायन कमुन्बाक अवने कुंडु सल्लेवेंडिद अंदर पोर चेवगर्गले उड़िय कडम
Now it is the duty of the soldiers to take the man to Caesar
अदरकाही इवर्गल कप्पल पायनते तेरिंदु कुंडार
Therefore they chose this voyage
अप्पडि पोगुर नरांग पायनतिले नडकर सम्बवगले तान नाम इप्पुलुद वासिक के केट
And now we happen to read the happenings in that voyage
नम्मुडिया रायर निंबवर आंडवर्वे सर्व वल्लमिलो देव
Our Caesar is an almighty god
नाम देवन कमुन्बाक निर्क्कुमुड्याह अलैक्कपट्टा वर्ग
We are called to stand before God
वलुवादपुडि तम्मुडिया महिमियान सनीदानतिल नम्मई निरुत्त अवर वल्लवराय इरुक्रान
And he is able to present us faultless before the presence of his glory
नाम असैविल्लाद राज्यते पिट्टुकोल्ला कुड़िया वर्ग
We are the ones who are to receive an immovable kingdom
नाम मंशुमार्न कुनिक्क मंशुमार्न कुमुन्बाक निर्क्क पात्तरवांगलाई मारवेंडिया वर्ग
We are the ones who are to change worthy to stand before the son of man
ओबर देवन्डे पुल्लेगलु देवन कमुन्बाक निर्क्कुमुड्याह अलैक्कपट्टा वर्ग
Every child of God is called to stand before God
अंद्रकी अंदर रायन कमुन्बाक निर्क्कुमुड्याह अवर्गल इंदा पायनते तोडेंगन उड़ुद अदो ओर कप्पल पायनम अगर रुद्द
On that day when they began this voyage to stand before Caesar it was taken in a ship
मुदलाम तिमुत्तय मुदलाम अधिकारम 19 वसनतिन अडिपडेले पार्क कुमुड़ुद इंदे कप्पल पायनम निंबदे विश्वास यात्रये कान्बिकरद
According to 1 Timothy 1:19 this voyage shows the faith life
ओबर देवन्डे पुल्लेगलु इंदे विश्वास पादिले नाम पोइ कटेसीयाक करयरिनाल तान नाम रायन कमुन्बाक निर्क्क मुड्यु
Every child of God only if they take this voyage of faith can we finally stand before Caesar
अन्नल इंगे एन्ना नरद्द
But what happened here?
इंदे पायनतिले अवर्गल मुन्नेरिकोंड रुद्दा राख
When they were ahead this voyage
इवर्गल मुन्नेरि पोइकोंडे रुद्दा राख
Even as they were going ahead
इप्पुलुद पुयलुम काठुगलुम बायंगरमान सोदनिगलुम अवर्गले सांधिकरद
Terrible tempestuous wind and cyclone hit them
इवर्गल अलाय अदरकपि न्बु ओढ़ुमेच यय मुड्या विल्ल
And after that they could not do anything
अवर्गल एधुमेच यय मुड्याद ओर सूनलेले तलपट्टान
A situation where they pushed into they could not do anything
इप्पुलुद अवर्गल कप्पले तट्टवैत्तु विट्टार्क तराये तट्टवैत्तु विट्टार्क
And now they pushed the sea to the anchor
इप्पुलुद अवर्गले कप्पल तराय तट्टी निंद्रु विट्टाद
Now their ship when their voyage stood ahead
इप्पुलुद कप्पलडे मुन्बगिली पोइ अप्पडिया मन्नले पोइ सोरिके निंद्रु विट्टाद
Four parts stuck towards the shore
कप्पलडे पिन्बगिली बातियन ना बायंगरा आला अडिचि ओटचिर
While the hinder part was broken because of the waves
कथुरिया परिशुद्ध नामद्विके महिमा उड़ाव राहय
Glory be to God's holy name
इंद्रिया मैसेज अलैकल्ड
Today's message is waves
ओबर मनिदन्नदि वाल्केलुम पलविदमान अलैकल्ड अडिकरदाक नाम कान्डर
We can see various waves beating against the life of every man
कडल कुपोनिंगन चला कडल पगिले बातियन अलैकल्ड इरुक्का
Going to the parts of the sea in some parts they would not be any waves
अप्पडि रुद्दा लाल अदो रम्बत अलाहा स्लोवा रुद्द
And there it would be very slow the motion
अलैकल्ड इल्लाद कडलकल कड़ेयाद
And there is no sea without waves
अन्न चले एडत्तले पोनिंगन अलैकल्ड यप्पु मुमुरमाय रुद्दुकटे रुद्द
Well if you can look at some parts of the sea the waves are boisterous
अलाल अलैकल्ड वॉयवुद्दल लिन चलुवा
That's why they say waves are ceaseless
एनंदाल अदो 24 रोवर्स अंदर देवन्डे नेमतिन बड़ि अदो सायल्बट्टु कुंडे रुद्द
Because it keeps on working according to the law of God
अन्न विल्लिनली इप्पुलु वेदतिले नाम पलविदमान अलैकल्ड इप्पार्कमुड्यु
We can see a variety of waves in the way of God
मनिद वाल्केले कुड़ पलविदमान अलैकल्ड ताकुरदाक नाम पार्क
Even in the human life we see various waves beating the
अदरकपि नम्बाक नाम सला कारियंगले सिन्डिकलाम
Before that let us think a few things
इंगे इंदे कप्पल ओर कुरिकपट्टे एडत्तिले वंद उड़ुद मुन्नणियम ऊंड्री अप्पडिया निंद्रु विट्टाद
Here the ship when it came to a particular part the four parts stuck fast
एन्ड्रकी ओर कप्पल कतराय तट्टिविट्टाद अदरकपि न्बु अदो मीक्कपट्टुद उड़ाद ओर कारिय
And it is very impossible that you move the ship after it is being stuck fast
निंगे चेन्नई मरीना पोनिंगन चले एडत्तले इंदे एडत्तिल कुलिक्के वेंडम अबिन पोटर्वा
If you go to Marina Beach in Chennai it will be written "Don't take bath here"
एदुक तेरिमा?
You know why?
अंगे ओर कप्पल यार्कनावे तरदत्ति अदो ओटच एडुत्ति अंदर ओटंज बाकलाल एंगरके तन्नीकुले इरुक
Because the ship had already stuck there and its remains are found there
अन्न वेली तेरियाद
It won't be seen outside
इन्दे वेलीले रुद्दा पोरमुलकु ओन्नु तेरियानले इवन यारंगिरुवा लेस अवर आला अडिचिन उल्ल गोय अडिचि आला कालिम
The people if they without their knowledge go into that part they will be stuck in that place
विश्वास कप्पलके रेंडु पगिली इरुक्रान
There are two parts in the life of faith
ओढ़ु मुन्बगिली मत्तु ओढ़ु पिन्बगिली
One the fore part the other hinder part
मुन्बगिली पेच्चा करकलाम
Four parts may be the talk
पित्तपगिली बलनाकर इरुक्केवेंड
While the hinder part should be the power
विश्वासतिले रेंडु पगिली इरुक्रान
There are two aspects of faith
ओढ़ु विश्वासते अरिकेडुद
One the confession of faith
मत्तु ओढ़ु विश्वासते नाम सायल्बट्टुद
The other the pactries of faith
देवन्डे राज्यम पेच्चिलल्ला अदो बलत्तिल इरुक्रान
For the kingdom of God is not in speech but in power
ओर देवन्डे अप्पले इंदे सोलुकरवन विश्वासतम मुदलावद अरिकेड
A child of God should first confess faith
नांगल आराधिकर देवन इंगले तप्पुविक्क वल्लवर इदो मुदलावद अरिके
The first confessionist our God whom we serve is able to deliver us
रेंडा अदो इंगल अक्किनीचुले ले पोट्टाल नांग मर्नतुकन नांग रेडी अगर रुद्द इदो सायल
Second confessionist even if he cast into the fiery furnace we are ready to take in death this is the practice
ओबर देवन्डे पुल्लेगलु नाम विश्वासते सायल्बट्टुद वेंड
Every child of God should practice faith in their life
वायत तरंदे नम्म विश्वासत्रला अरिके चेरो अन्न क्रियेगलिनाले नाम अदे सायल्बट्टुम वेंड
We confess our faith with our mouth but we need to practice it in our deeds
क्रियेइल्लाद विश्वासम सत्तद वेदम सुटिकाट्टुद
For the word of God says faith without work is dead
पुरियर्पट्टु ओबर देवन्डे पुल्लेगलुम कृभयिनाले नाम निदिविश्वासीलाक निदिमानगलाक मात्रपट्टा वर्ग
In the New Testament every child of God is made righteous by grace
अन्न क्रियेइलाले नाम निदिमानगलाई माल्दुकाट्टम वेंडिदुम अवस्य
But it is very essential that we have to live out righteous by our works
इंगे पार्गन अन्न मुन्नणियम ऊंड्री असयाद रुद्द
Here the fore part was stuck fast
अन्न पिन्नणियम अलैकल्डिनाले ओटंज गोय
While the hinder part was broken with waves
अदो एन्ना मुन्नणियम पिन्नणियम
What fore part and hinder part?
कप्पलल मुन्बगिली पिन्बगिली नोन रुक
There are two parts in a ship
ओर नानयत्तुकी इरण्डु पक्कंगले इरुक्रद बोल
And as there are two sides of a coin
देवन कुम इरण्डु पक्कंगल उड़द
There are two sides even for God
ओर पगिलीले देवन अन्भुल्लवर
One side God is love
मत्तु ओढ़ु पगिलीले अवर्ग पच्चिकर अक्किन निंद सोल्लपट्टा रुद्द
The other side he is a consuming fire
अदो बोल कप्पलके रेंडु अनुभवंगले रुक ओन्न मुन्नणियम मत्तु ओढ़ु पिन्नणियम
Even so there are two parts in a ship the fore part and the hinder part
निंगल अदो वेदतिले निंगल लाल आकवेदतिले निंग पटिकलाम
You can read fast in the word of God about this
अन्न मुन्नणियत्तुको ओर कारणम इरुक्रद अदो पिन्नणियत्तुले ओर कारणम इरुक्र
There is a
मुन्नणियत्तुके अदो मुन्नाले पोइकोंडे रुद्द
The fore part will always go ahead
अन्न इंदे डायरेक्शन तिरपर्दलाम भुन्नणियत्तुलाद रुद्द
While the changing of direction is in the hinder part
ओर कप्पल सरियाक गोवेंडमानल पिन्नणियत्तुले सुक्कान सरियाक इरुक्केवेंड
If a ship should go well the helm in the ship should go right
ओर एडत्तल अदो निरुत्तपट्टवेंडमानल अदंग नंगूरम सरियाक इरुक्केवेंड
If it should stop in a place the anchor should be proper
अदो सरियान एडत्तुको पोइ चेरवेंडमानल सूनलेगले समालित्तु पोवेंडमानल नल्ला मालुमी इरुक्केवेंड
If it should manage with the situation and the climate there should be a good captain for it
नल्ला सुक्कानु मुर्दु नल्ला नंगूरमु मुर्दु नल्ला मालुमी मुर्दु सीदोस नले अनुगुलमाइ लावटाल एल्ला मे नोरिंगी पोइवेडम
A good helm a good captain and a good anchor if the climate is not proper the weather is not proper then it will be broken up
अदो बोल इंदे विश्वास पादिले वंद न्बु ओढ़ु
So was it after coming into this path of
नाम सरियान पादिले पोवुमुड्याह नाम अलैक्कपट्टा वर्ग अदो निंगल कवनतिला वाइक्केवेंड
You should keep in attention that we are called to trace a right path
अपोसल 27 मदिकारम 29 वसनते पार्क
Turning to Acts 27 and 21
पिन 29
29
पिन्नणियत्तुले रुद्द नाल नंगूरंगले पोट्टि अवर्गल काठरु रुद्द
We see they cast four anchors out of the stone and
पिन्नणियत्तुले नालु नंगूरंगले पोट्टि अंदर कप्पल स्टैन बनिकाट्टार्क
They made the ship stand fast with four anchors
अदे अधिकार 27 मदिकारम 30 वसनते पार्क अपोसल 27 30
When we turn to Acts 27:30
अवर्गल मुन्नणियत्तुले रुद्द नंगूरंगले पोड़ मारी अक्टन एक्शन कुड़तान
From the fore part they gave the action that they would cast anchors
प्रिय मानुले नम्मुडिया वाल्केले नंगूरम पोड़वेंडिद अवस्य
Beloved we need to lay anchors in our life
इंदे पादिले निंगल वरुमुलद ओंगल कुले ओर नंगूरम इरुक्केवेंडिद अवस्य
When you come to this path you need to have an anchor
अन्न इंगे पार्गन नदु कडल्ला पोरांग नंगूरन चुन्ना ओर कुरिकपट्टा एडत्त्र अवन स्टैन बननुना अदल नंगूरम पोट्टाम निक्यो
When they go through the mid-sea only if they cast anchors the ship will stand
यब्बल आला अडिचालु ताकु पुडिच निकरदुक नंगूरम तेव
The anchors are essential to stand fast how much ever boisterous the waves
ओर नंगूरत्तल अदो स्टैन बननुना अद्धत नंगूरत्त पोट्ट अबिक नंगूरत्त पोट्टकटे रुद
If it cannot stand with one anchor they will keep on putting anchors
अन्न इंगे अवर्गल नंगूरंगले पोट्टार्क नालु नंगूरंगले पोट्टार
Here they cast four anchors
अदो अदे कान्बिकरद
What does it show?
एबरेर आराम मदिकारम 19 वसनते पार्क
When you turn to Hebrews 6:19
एबरेर आर 19
Hebrews 6:19 अंदन नम्बिके नमक निलयुम उर्दयुम त्रैकुलाक पोगुरदमाने आत्मनंगूरमाय इरुक्रद Which hope we have as an anchor of the soul both sheer and steadfast and which entered into that within the waves
नम्मुडिया आत्मनंगूरम निंबदे नम्बिके अगर रुद
The anchor of a soul is the hope
इंदे कप्पल पायनमल्ला ओर वेरी नम्बिकेलाद बोइकुर
Yes this voyage of faith is only in a hope
नम्मुडि इंदे पादिकु ओर नम्बिकेलाद नाम पोर
Even this our path is only by hope
कंडुस वासिकरुन ओढ़ु कानामल विश्वासिकरवन बक्किवन
Blessed are the ones who don't see and yet believe then those who see and believe
अन्न इंगे नालु नंगूरंगले पोररान
But here four anchors were laid
अदो अदे कान्बिकरद
What does it show?
ओढ़ु देसलोनिकेर ऐंदा मदिकारम 8 वसनते पार्क
When you turn to 1 Thessalonians 5:8
अदो मुदल नंगूरम
That is the first anchor
ओढ़ु देसलोनिकेर ऐंदी 8
1 Thessalonians 5:8 पखरकुड़िवगलाहि नामो तेडिंद्वरगलाहिरुद्द विश्वासम अन्भु यन्नु मार्कवसत्तयुम रच्चिप्पि नम्बिके यन्नु तलेचीरावयुम तरित्तुकुंडरुक कड़बो But let us four of the day be sober putting on the breastplate of faith and love and for in helmet the hope of salvation
ओर देवन्डे अप्पले नम्बिके अदो अवनकु नम्ब तेवयान ओर कारिय
For a child of God hope is much essential
अदो ओर आत्मनंगूरम अगर इरुक्केवेंड
It should be the anchor of a soul
इंगे चोली इरुक्रद रच्चिप्पि नम्बिके
It is a hope of salvation
ओढ़ुडिया रच्चिप्पि ले ओनको ओर नम्बिके इरुक्कन
You need to have a hope in your salvation
रच्चिप्पु रम्बु मुख्यमान
Salvation is important
रच्चिप्पु एन्न नैरत्तिले नाम काठुकोलन
Salvation should be preserved
वायत ओढ़ु ओनुड़ रच्चिप्पु नेरे वेरे निंगल काठरुंगले निंद चोल्लपट्टा रुद
And it is said work out your salvation with fear
रच्चिप्पु दान नम्मुडिया पादुकाप
Yes salvation is our protection
निर रचिका पट्टवन इन्गरद नान दाम पिसास ओने विट्टि वलगी पोइकोंडे रुद
It is because you are saved the devil is away from you
पिसास ओने विट्टि वलगरुन्डे रगसियमे ओनुड़ रच्चिप्पदा
Devil is away from you just because of salvation
ओम पक्कत्तल वरिक ओरुवा निर रचिका पट्टवन ओने विलगी पोइवा
He comes night to you when you are saved he goes away
ओम मेल अंदर नामु ओनकु तेरियाद अंदर पिसासुकु तेरिय
You don't know the anchor of it but the devil knows it
ओनुड़ नेट्टीले इरुक्र आंडोडे नामत्त पिसासुकु तेरिय
And the devil knows the name of the lord which is in your forehead
ओने पात्तवने सोलिरुवा अबिन वलगी पोइवा
Soon as he sees he will go away
निर अंदर वीटले रुद्द अंदर वीटकटे पिसास वरकुड़
If you are in that house the devil should not come night to your house
ओनुडत्तल ओर सक्ति इरुक्न सोलिड
And he will say there is a power in you
ओनकुले ओर रच्चिप्पु ओनकुले इरुक्कन
Salvation should be in you
अदा ओनुड़ नम्बिके
That is your hope
अदन नम्बिके दान ओनुड़ नंगूरम
That is your anchor
इंदे मार्कतिले पोन ओनकु ओर सरियान रच्चिप्पि अनुभव इरुक्कन
If you ought to go in this path you need to have a right path of salvation
मुदलाम पेदरे मुदलाम अधिकारम 13 वसनते पार्क
Turning to 1 Peter 1:13
नांगे एन्ने चोल्लपट्टा रुद
What does it mean said there?
ओढ़ु पेदरे ओढ़ु 13
1 Peter 1:13 आखयाल निंगल उन्गल मानति नरिये कट्टिकुंड तेडिंद्व बुत्तियलो इरुद्द एसु कृष्ण वेलिपड़ुमोद उन्गलका अलिक्कपट्टुम कृभयिमे तूरन नम्बिके इरुद्द Therefore gird up the loins of your mind be sober and hope to the end for the grace that is to be brought unto you at the revelation of Jesus Christ
कृभयिमे नम्बिके
Hope upon the grace
तूरन नम्बिके ओनुड़ कृभयिमे ले इरुक्कन
Perfect hope should be upon the grace
आविकुरिया जीवितिले वंद न्बु नम्मुडि नम्मुड़ नंगूरम कृभय अगर नम्बिके कृभय अगर इरुक्रद
After coming into spiritual life our anchor is hope
आंडवरम मट्टुनाल नम्बिद पादिले निंग पोइटे रुद
Go in this path hoping on God
आंडोडे कृभम मट्टु ओनकु रुद निर गडेसवरिके पोइच अंदर
If you have the grace of God you can reach the ends
इंदी केतन वेर निंगल आंडोर मेलम मुलु नम्बिके विकरेर
How many of you place your full hope upon God today?
ओनुड़ नम्बिके दान ओनुड़ के नंगूरम अगर इरुक्र
It is your hope it is your anchor
अन्न इंगे नर्द्द कारण एन्ना कारिय एन्ना इंदे नंगूरंगले अरुत्तुविट्टाद अंदर कप्पल तडुमार आरमित्त
But what happens is only when they cut off this anchor the ship will start to tremble
नंगूरंगले अरुत्तु कडलिले विट्टुविट्टार्क
They have taken up the anchors and committed it unto the sea
इरण्डा गुरुंदियर मुदलाम अधिकारम 1 वसनते पार्क
Turning to 2 Corinthians 1:9
देवन पेरिल असयाद ओर नम्बिके ओनकु इरुक्केवेंड
You need to have a confidence immovable upon God
आंडवर मेल उर्दयान नम्बिके इरुक्कन
A firm confidence upon God
अदो एन्ना नम्बिके
What is that hope?
इदो वरे इंगलकु वंद प्रचनिगले इंगले तप्पुवित्तार
As he did too he made us escape the problems
पत्ता वसनम एन्ना सोल्लेदरद
What does this verse tense?
तप्पुवित्तार
He delivered
इन्त्रुम तप्पुविक्किरार
He does deliver
इन्नुम तप्पुविप्पार
And will at deliver
एन्ड्रु नांगल अवर्ये नम्बिकोंड रुद
Thus we trust only in him
मरित्तोरे एडुपुगर देवन मेल नांगल नम्बिके अगर रुद
Yes we trust a hope in God who raises up the dead
नांगल इंगल मेल नम्बिके आयराम
We don't trust in ourselves
मरित्तोरे एडुपुगर देवन मेले नांगल नम्बिके अगर रुद
But in God which raises the dead
ओढ़ु ओढ़ुड़ रच्चिप्पि ले ओनकु अदो नम्बिके
One hope in your salvation
कृभय नम्मुकु ओर नम्बिके
Grace in our hope
अद्धत देवन मेल निर नम्बिके इरुक्कन
Next hope upon God always
आंडवर निर अप्पडि अंदा अलवु नम्बिकोंड रुद
You should always trust upon God
रोम ऐंदा मदिकारम
Romans 5
इरण्डा वसनते नाम पार्क
Still we see
अंगे एन्ने सोल्लपट्टा रुद
What does this means say?
देव महिमये नांगल आडेवोम इन्गर नम्बिके
The hope that we would attain the glory of God
इंदे ओट्टात्तम उड़ियमुलद अनकु देव महिमे कड़ेक
It's at the end of my race I'll reach the glory of God
ओढ़ु लावद नम्बिके ओनुड़ रच्चिप्प
First hope is salvation
रेंडा अदो नम्बिके ओनुड़ आंडोडे पूर्ण कृभय
Second hope is upon perfect grace of God
देवनीय मुलुवुदु सार्नरपद
Third hope is entirely upon God
नालावद ओनुड़ नम्बिके देव महिमे निर आडेवाय
Fourth hope that we would attain the glory of God
इंगे एन्ना नर्द्द
What happened here?
इवर्गल पिन्नणियत्तुले नालु नंगूरंगले पोट्ट रुद
They had cast four anchors in the hinder part
अन्न इप्पु सूनले मारीन उड़ुद
Not now when the weather changes
अवंग इंदे नालु नंगूरंगले अरुत्तुत्तान
They took up the anchors
इप्पु नर्द्द सम्बव एन्न
Now what happened?
निर एप्पु इंदे नम्बिके लाल विट्टि ओन कप्पल तराय तट्टी विड़करद
The moment you take up your hope your four parts stuck fast
ओनुड़ कप्पल अप्पडिया तराय तट्टी निंद्रु विड़करद
Your ship reaches a ground
ओनुड़ विश्वास अप्पडिया निंद्रु विड़करद
Your faith stops there
प्रिय मानुले इंगले नम्बिके मट्टु निंग विट्रवे गुड
Beloved never lose your hope
देवन निंग अप्पडिये नम्बन
Ever trust in God
एन्न द कालतिलो
At all times
इदो वरे तप्पुवित्तार
As he did too he delivered
इन्ने की तप्पुविक्किरार
He did deliver to them
इन्ने मेल तप्पुविप्पार एन्ड्रु नांगल अवर्ये नम्बिकोंड रुद
We trust that he will at deliver
अन्न इंदे नम्बिके एप्पु इल्ल खोरंजिद अवन अदन नम्बुगुर लाल विट्टी
But the time this hope came down they cut it all
एप्पु नंगूरम बोइच अल्लाह अदरकपर्ग कप्पल वंद स्टैन बनमुड्याद
When the anchor is gone the stick cannot withstand
उलियकारण विश्वासम निक्काद विश्वासीर्द विश्वासम निक्काद
Then the faith of a believer and a servant of God cannot stand fast
इप्पु एन्ना नर्द्द
Now what happened?
मुन्नणियम असयवाय इल्ल
Four parts stuck fast
अदु की इन्ने पोके कड़ेयाद
No more going friends
अदो एन्दा डायरेक्शनले दिर्भद
It cannot change
अदो मुदिद्दु बोन खड़
That's gone
अन्न इन्नोर वेदिले पार्क
But in another place
पिन्नणियम अडिच अडिच आला अडिच ओटच तल्लिय
The hinder part was broken with violence of waves
एसु कृष्ण तम्मुडे सीसरलोड ओर कप्पल पायनते तोड़ रुद
Jesus Christ had a voyage with his disciples
अंदन नैरत्तिले अवर पिन्नणियत्तुलाद इरुद्द बाइबल चोल
And the Bible says he was in the hinder part then
Mark 4:4
Mark the Gospel chapter 4
38 वसनते पार्क
Verse 38 we see कप्परिन पिन्नणियत्तिल अवर तलयनीय वेत्त नित्रयाय इरुद्द
कप्पलिन पिन्नणियत्तिले एसु नित्रयाय इरुद्द इलैपारीकुंड रुद ओर एडम अदो दान
The hinder part of the ship is the place where Jesus was resting
निर विश्वास जीवितिले रुद कत्तर ओनकुल इलैपारुवा
If you are in the faith life Jesus will rest in you
निर सरियान नम्बिके ले रुद कत्तर ओनकुल इलैपारुवा
If you are in the right hope God will rest in you
ओर उलियकार
A summit of God, sir
एसु सीसरलोड पड़वले बोहुमुदे अंदर कडल बायंगरमा कोंदलचिर
When Jesus was going with his disciples in the ship the stream was boisterous
अवर अदल अलाहा इलैपारीटे रुद
But he was beautifully resting in it
अन्न सीसरले कत्तनांग
The disciples shouted
अप्पो ओर तरकदार आया या कप्पल का इब्बल कडल कोंदलिकिद
Then one man asked why is the sea so boisterous?
अदो पुयल अडिच कप्पल कौउदरुद गल्ल
It's not to put the ship upside down
अंदुड़िया सिस्टिगर नम्मुट वंद रुकरार निंद सोल्ली कडल अलैकल्ड लाने जिदा है? ताला अडिच अला अला अवर अलाहा बोटले निंजर तोटले रुद मारी अलाहा रुद अन्न अदा तान अवर इलैपारीकुंडे रुद
But the sea
अदो वंद सिस्टिगराय एन्द वेदत्तले इलैपारा विक्कमुडिमा अवल्ल इलैपारा विचद इवा अम्बल वरुन कूचल बोट्ट अवर एलिपी
The sea was glad because the creator was inside resting and it gave a good lullaby by the waves and thus making Jesus to rest well but the disciples did not understand this
ओबर विश्वासीकुल्लो उलियरुकुल्लो आंडवर इलैपारदर ओर एडन अरुक्कन
Every servant of God and believer has a place where God rests
एप्पु एसु इलैपारमुडियो
When can God rest?
निर नालु नंगूरंगले स्टांगा पोट्ट रुद
When you have the strong four anchors
देव महिमे आडेवेंगर नम्बिके ओने विट्टि पोवेवे गुड
You should never leave the hope that you will attain the glory of God
ओनुड़ रच्चिप्पि नम्बिके निर अंदर
You should never lose the hope of salvation
कृभयिमे ले पूर्ण नम्बिके निर निक्यो
You should have a perfect trust upon the grace of God
देवन मेल असयाद नम्बिके इरुक्कन
An immovable trust upon God
सोहन कड़ेक
You I will receive
कड़ेक अदा एसु का सावे
Or else I will die for my Jesus
वेल अकड़ेक
I will get the job
कड़ेक अदा नान जावतले तरितिर
Else I will be staid first in prayer
इंदे पिसासिन बोराटत्त वंद नान जयपे
I will be victorious in the demonic trial
जयकादाल विसास काले नान विलमाट
Else I will not fall at the feet of the devil
इंदे अलवु ओनुड़ फेथ निर नल्ला डेवलप बनमुड्यो ओर टाइम
This is a time you have to develop your faith well
आंडवर ओने पति चैलेंज बननु
And God should challenge with you
ओने वंद निर ओर पोर कुदर
You are a warhorse
पोर कुदर इल्ल अंदर रेस कोर्स निर बातिंग
If you look at the battle horse or the race horse
अदम मेल पनत्तक कट्टुवा पनत्ते कट्टुवा
They will tie up the money upon it
एन्न अदा यांकुदर जयचुर
My horse will prevail
अदो बोल ओने एन्ने एन्न काट्त कत्तर सोल्डरी यांपुले जयचुर
Likewise looking you at me God is challenging my child will be victorious
इन्ने की पिसास आंडोर निक्करांग नु वचिक
Today if God and the devil is standing here
वचिक अल्ल अवर इंगे दान इरुक्कर अवर पिसास इंगे दान अर्क
He is standing here the devil is also here
रेंडा साइलर रेंडो निक्र
As both of them are standing
अवर चोलरार यांपायन जयचुर
He says my son will be victorious
पिसास चोलराय इल्ल निंग कोंजो कोंजो मै एडुत्तु पार्गन अवन तोतर
Devil says you take little by little he will fail
इदुक नदुले योबु निक्करद
Now Job is standing between
ओर उत्तमन निक्र
An upright man
पोल्लापुक वलगिन मंशन निक्र
One who escheweth evil is there
सनमार्कन निक्र
And the just man is there
देवनकु बयंदम निक्र
He who feared God is standing here
इप्पु कत्तर सोल्डरी योबु जयचुर
Now God is saying Job will be victorious
पिसास चोलराय जयकेवे माट
Devil says he will never prevail
इंगे इरुक्र योबुगलुकलाय इप्पु ओर परिच वंदा योबु एन्ना सेवि
All the jobs you are here if you have such a test what will you do?
आंडवर नान कोंजो इन्ना स्टेडी आयकर इप्पु पोइ एन्ना त्याद पंदे इंगे निंग कट्टी पुड़ा
Dear God I will be a little more steady and you don't give the challenges like that now
नान नान कोंजो स्टेडी आयकर
Let me be a little more steady
नान यार्कनावे प्रचनिले वंद रुद निंग अद्धत प्रचनिया रिलीज पनि विड
I am already in a problem you don't release the next problem
एप्पडि निंग वंद रुद
How are you come here?
आंडोर चोलरार यांमहन जयपा
God is saying my son will prevail
यांमहन जयपा
My daughter will be victorious
अन् उदर्गिलिनाल अवन पावच जयमाट
He will not sin with his mouth
इवगल एल्लावत्तिले अवन देवने कोरे सोल्ला माट
In all these things he will not charge God foolishly
इदो दान देवन्डे चैलेंज
This is the challenge of God
अवन अदुका काउंडरपन्ड
And he was encountering us
अवन चोलरान नानक इल्ल निंग ओनुन एडुत्तु पार्गन विड्र
But the devil is saying take little by little and he will forsake you
कार्य जयचुद
Who prevailed
योबु इन मूलमाग देवन जयत
As God was victorious through Job
अवन निन्न अवन नान देवन्डे पुल्ले इंगर निर्विच
He stood and proved that he is the child of God
अन्न योबु इन मनवी ओड़िवेड
But Job's wife failed
इन्ने केतन मनवी मार तोकरिंगे एतन पुरुषर मार तोकरिंग
Today I'm not knowing how many wives and husbands they failed
अन्न पिन्नणियम निंबदे देवम इलैपारुम ओर एडम
But the hinder part is where God rests
प्रिय मानुले ओनुड़ ए कप्पल इप्पु एन्न निक्केद
Beloved in what state is your ship now?
ओनुड़ ए कप्पल पायनाय इप्पु एंगरके
Where is your voyage now?
तरदत्तिच
Is it a ground?
इल्ल पिन्नणियलाल ओटंज नोरिंगी पोइच
Is the hinder part broken?
इल्ल इन्ना पोइट दान रुद तनले सरियान पादिके पोइकुर
Is your ship on the right track?
निंग योस्तु पार्गन ओनुड़ विश्वास पायना एप्पडि इरुक्क निंग वार
You just consider how is your faith voyage?
नम्मुडे उलियकार अंदमान कन्वेंशन उबन
Our servants of God once went to Andaman Convention
तिरिमी कप्पल वंद रुद
When they returned in the ship
तिरिन्न बातिंगन बैल तोडेंग
Suddenly the cyclone started
अदा इंदिया उगर रुद इकप्पल इलंगी नोकी पोइकोंडे रुद
The ship which was to come journey to Sri Lanka
अदो बोल
So also
नम्मुडे विश्वास कप्पल चले रुद इन्दे पुयल लाल अडियो
Even in a voyage of faith cyclones may begin
अदन ऐरसी ओनले रुद नारागत नोकी कलपो
And instead of going to Zion it may go ahead to hell
ऐरसिलेमले रुद पुदिया वानतुक बोहो
From Jerusalem to new heaven it will go
तिरिमी कत्तर नवन वर नु कोंजो पुयल अया अमत्त तिरिब्याद रे स्टेट आहो
Then the Lord will stop the cyclone and again it will become steady
दायोसे इदो पादे मारीन नालु कप्पल वड़याम वोंजो पात्तुक पादे तिरपर्दुक वायपुरुके ओटंजा कप्पल अंदर तरुंद सरिपट्टा मुड़
Kindly even if your path changes see to that your ship is not broken because your path can be changed by God but if your ship is broken no one can help
इरण्डा नाल अघम यूर्वता मदिकारम 37 वसनते पार्क
2 Chronicles chapter 2 and verse 37
नांगे ओर रेंडर राजाकल चैंद कप्पल लान चेंजी कलपित
Two kings they made a ship
एल्लान कलम्बी वरुमुदे
When they were coming up
देवन अंदर आईके त विरुम्बल
God did not desire that union
मामसत्तोड़ आईके इप्पु द देवन विरुप्पड़
God does not desire one being united in flesh
इंगे तवरान आईके त ओर विश्वासीय उलियनो एर्पट्टिकोल अप्पु अंदर अवन ए कप्पल वड़ेंदु विकरद
Where a believer or a servant of God is a wrong communion his sheep breaks up
37 वसनते पार्क
Verse 37
अदुक मुद्दिन वसनंगले नाम वेद वस्तले पार्क
We see the verse before also
रेंडन नाल अघम यूर्वत तिम्पत्ति अंजे पार्क
2 Chronicles 20:35
युदाविन राजावागी योशब्बत पोल्लापुच चिकरवनान अगस्य यन्नु इसरेविलिन राजा ओढु तोलमाई पन्नीनान
King Jehoshaphat of Judah joined himself with a Hasiah king of Israel who did very wickedly
आन अबिनाल अवर्गल रेंडो वरुम कुड़िकोंड
Therefore because both of them joined
कत्तर ओमुड़ ए क्रियेगले मुरित्तु पोट्टार आन अबिनाल कप्पलगल उड़ेंदु विच
The Lord had broken their works therefore the ship was broken
अदो तार्शिसुकु बोहुमुडियाह एर्पट्टा पट्टा कप्पलगल
It was theirs the ships ahead to Tarsus
इंदे कप्पलुडे नोकम एन्न
What is the main aim of the ship?
तार्शिसुकु पोइ
Going to Tarsus
अंगर ओरक ओपिरिन तंगत लाल एडुत्तु वर
Take the gold of Ophir from there
विश्वास पायनतिले निर विश्वासते नेरावाइ पिट्टुकोल्ला वेंड
In your path of faith you need to get faith in abundance
अन्न इंदे फ्रेंडशिप इंदे फेलोशिप इब्बल लान चोल इंदे शिप लान जयते ओरिजिनल फेथ शिप ओ ओटच
But the other ships strange ships like friendships and fellowships will break this ship of faith
निंग सभैली गुड़ ओर वेरियो बाटिंची वेत्त चयन
Even in the church you need to have a life of separation
समुदायत्तल ओर वेरियो बाटिंची वेत्त मात्रम अल्ल
Not only the life of separation in the society
सभैलीले निंगल वेरियो बाटिंची वेत्त चय्य कडमे पट्टा रुद
You need to have a life of separation even in the church
सभैलीले एल्लार्मे परिशुद्ध वांग रुद चोली विड
In the church you cannot call all saints
परिशुद्ध वांगला कुमुड़ अलैक्कपट्टा वर
We are called to be saints
इदलिन तोल्बीय उल्ल वर्ग
And there are people with failure sense
इन्मात्त कारर
The backsliders in it
देवी कमात्त
The people who are not divine
आविकुरिया इल्लाद देवी कमानपान मेल इल्ल
And those with no divine attributes
आविकुरियत्तिले कोलंदे गल रुद
And those who are babes in Christ
इब्बड़ि पलविद तरपट्टा जनंगल देवन्डे सनीदानतुक वरुवा
Likewise variety of people will come to the presence of God
I told you, variety of people were in that ship. The captain. Then the soldiers. Those whom present. Likewise, various groups of people were there. Among all of them, we need to leave out a life of separation. Because we are called to stand before Caesar. If your fellowship is not right, your faith will decrease step by step. Turning to 1 Kings, Chapter 22. And Verse 48. Again there, we see such an incident. If our life is not right, our faith will become nothing. God himself will break it and make it void. Verse 48. Jehoshaphat, Tarshish, Kapalgalai, Avan, Yarpadithinan. Jehoshaphat made ships of Tarshish go to offer for gold. But they went north. For the ships were broken at Isiah and Gibe. Somehow, he tried to bring the gold of Ophir. But he could not. Beloved, God should honor your faith. And your faith should not be that God may condemn you. God should exalt, appreciate your faith, saying, I have not seen so great faith in Israel. I have been surprised at the faith of some believers. They are very strong in their faiths. Being strong in their faith, they give their lives before their eyes. They have education. Good wealth. And even good position. At the right time, their faith is strong. The faith is good anchor. And that anchor is the whole anchor of a soul. Beloved, where is your ship now? Where is your faith life now? Is it broken? Or is it stuck fast? Or is it standing with anchors? Or is it taking its voyage to the desired haven? Because this world is entirely different. This is a big ocean. An ocean full of wicked. Ocean with the straits. When you turn to Isaiah. 57:20, the wicked are like troubled sea. 2 Corinthians 10:11. When you cross the ocean of straitness. After coming to the spiritual. You will have to pass through this wickedness and affliction. The whole world is in the hand of the wicked. We are journeying in this world. What do the laws do? The Lord says, if your anger is right. If your aim is right. If you keep up your faith and hope. He is able to make you reach the desired haven. Some waves are strong. During the tsunami, you say the waves, they are very strong. So terrible, they are approaching the, all the houses and the trees. And we just have placed hand at the shore of the city. Suddenly, you can see the same waves, they are boisterous. You just think over. How many of you are going through such floods? Even today, I believe you are being stuck by waves. But understand one thing. When you come to this path, waves against us will blow. The time you have taken this Bible in your hand, you have to take the swim against the current. Turning to Matthew 14:24. When the wind is contrary, you will be tossed with waves. That is what said here. The ship was tossed with waves, for the wind was contrary. In another sense. The last day's sign is the waves of the sea. Turning to Luke 21:25. 21:25 of Luke the Gospel. The sea and the waves roaring. As a sign of the last days, these are times when the waves roar against our believers. That's why our people face problems not ordinary, even in the society, in the family, in the work spot, and everywhere around. It comes again and again. But what happened? The hinder part of the ship was broken. Look into what state they were pushed. How many of you are found with your faith broken this morning? How many of you have cast up your hope? How many of you have come to a state where you have totally lost faith and hope? Understand one thing. In this path, you have waves. But you need to take the right ship, the ship in the right way. What is the word of God saying? If you trust him. Then he will stop the waves. Now I am to say a few things about our God, and then go about waves. Our God walks upon the waves. God has the authority over the conflict. Job, Chapter 9. He treadeth upon the waves. Our God is a God who treadeth upon the waves. Whatever be the waves against you, you worship the God who walks upon the waves. Therefore, I come to say the fact, that no wave has the right to destroy you. When you turn to Matthew 14. 14:25, God who treadeth upon the waves. In Job, God who treadeth upon the waves. In Matthew 14:25, he walked upon the waves. Yes, in the fourth watch of the night, Jesus was walking on the sea. Various waves may be beaten against you without ceasing. But God who called you. God who has brought you in this voyage. God who is the God who preserving you in the path of faith. First, believe in the power of God. However strong the waves may be, our God who treadeth upon the waves is with us. Turning to Psalm 65. Psalm 65:7. He still at the noise of the waves. When Jesus was upon the earth. There was a great boisterous situation. He rose up and said, peace be still. And it was off. That is the power of our God. God still at the noise of the waves. That is the power in the word of God. God puts it down, God still at the down. Psalm 89. And Verse 9. He caused it to be still. He controls us. After that, it can do nothing. It won't move. Psalm 107:29, he make the storm a calm, and the waves thereof are still. Therefore, God who may worship is a God who treadeth upon the waves against us, and he still sit a calm. Turning to 2 Corinthians 10:11. He beats the waves. He controls us. 2 Corinthians 10:11. He shall smite the waves in the sea. With that, it will be controlled. When Elijah and Elisha bet the waves of Jordan, it was still. When Moses' strength is wrought toward the Red Sea, it was divided. God whom you worship is an almighty God. God who called you is an almighty God. He is a God who no man had seen, whom no man can see, and the only potentate. You may be afraid if the paves will prevail, but God has a border and a limit for the waves to stop. Come hither. And don't cross it. God will not permit the waves to cross over you. Jeremiah 5:22. He will not allow it to prevail. Look at the power of our God there. Though the waves may not toss against you. They will not prevail, not pass over. God has placed a limit for us. How many of you believe in God? Our God still at the waves. He who still at the waves. He who helps you tread upon the waves. Look at the human people, they have various kinds of problems. But let me speak of the waves now. First, I told you of the power of God. Only then, when I say about the waves, you'll not be afraid. Or else you'd be fearful of the waves. One of a servant of God, when this tsunami came, was in Andaman. Before the service, he was drinking coffee. In his faith home. It was near the sea shore. And there was a new brother, who was changed there nearly. He was there in that faith one. Two sisters. When he had the morning cave, there was a sheik. That Steve was trembling then. He just came out. And the next wave came. It was coming rapidly, and the sisters and the brother was running. All the four were running. The whole village were running around. The first wave came. Two sisters, they were hit by it and fell down. The second wave came. And again, they ran for some time. Again, another wave came. The brother was just jumping into battle. And he just ran away. The others were stuck by the waves, and the village was lost. He was torn, his dresses were torn, he ran here, and they helped his keltur, finally rescued by the helicopter. Don't know how many kilometers he ran. He was faster than the tsunami. Finally, he landed at Tamboram, and after that, he came to Irinbulu, where they could not recognize him. After that, all the senior pastors, they came, ran, running, recognized him, and hugged him, saying, he came back alive. Waves may come, but you have to run and escape. Servants of God are believers, if you don't escape the waves, you will die. Psalm 88:7. And the sea shows the affliction. Thou hast afflicted me with thy waves. Afflictions is among the people. Various kinds of afflictions. That is why Jesus called out, saying, woe, all those who are heavy-hearted, come unto me. Affliction is a sign of curse. All those who have this affliction, it is a sign of cause in their life. If it is so, curse is a wave. Affliction is a wave. And this affliction or labor was appointed to man when he was cursed. Turning to Genesis, Chapter 3 and Verse 17. In sorrow shall thou eat of the fruits. That is why, because there is sorrow in the beginning, Jesus spoke about the sorrow. That is why Jesus said, come ye that are labored and heavy-hearted. Do you have any sorrow in your life today? Affliction in your life, sorrow regarding others, and affliction regarding your children. All these are the waves which come against your ship, that it might be broken. The moment we give place to the sorrow, it means you have given place to the waves to beat you. See the people who swim, they go in through the waves. And they will just go forward. In our life, are we beaten by the waves? Because the first man was cursed with the sorrow, it is something which is clinging on to human beings. That is why, whatever be the message we deliver, some sorrows do not leave us. How much ever we are in filled, sorrows do not leave us. Sorrow is a curse, kindly don't give place to it, don't be attacked by the wave. 2 Samuel 22:5. What does it say? The waves of death. Waves of death compass to me. Today, devil tries to. Today, devil tries to destroy our servants of God and believers. Somehow to vacate them. Power of death is thriving with all the believers. Understand well, after taking the Bible, don't be afraid of deaths. This is our fundamental doctrine. After coming into this path, don't be afraid of deaths. After going into military, can you be afraid of death? Just imagine. Standing in Cogle, if you are afraid of death, what will happen? Standing in the valley of lay, if you are afraid of your life. Yes, it's ultimate goal is death. Your life may go away or it may be with you by preserving the land. That is why our faith life is compared to military. What is it said in Timothy? Every man that has written this mastery. Second Timothy two four. No man that vereth entangleth himself with affairs of his life that we will place him who hath chosen him to be a soldier. Soldier, you are a poor veteran. If you are in the faith life, you are a soldier. We like soldiers today. I will come like a soldier. There is a church called Salvation Army. Salvation Army. Have you seen such people? The servants of God, they have the stars in the shoulder. With the star, you can find the designation of the pastor. Even the sisters have that. Worker sisters, they have the stars and the designation. They show that they are the army of God. You who are seated here, are you like soldiers? Have you written in to become a soldier? Are you like military? We are soldiers for Christ. That is why, what is the verse above? Thou therefore in due hardness is a good soldier of Jesus. A good soldier has a symptom of enduring hardness. Just look into. Waves of death may hit you. Death will try to engulf you. It may be through sickness, to a conflict, to a danger, to an accident. The spirit of death may strive to take you away. But you should not be afraid. You should stand against death. For to me, to Christ's, live and to die is gain. When he asks you to lift up your hand, you will all do it. But today, if you have the, tomorrow if you have the cuff and coat, you have to place the hand and pray. Soldiers, where they ought to stand. Stand in the battlefield. They have to give their life in the battlefield. Today, after coming to spiritual life, waves of death may toss. Yahakov, one, six of James. There is a wave there. For he that wevereth is like the wave. Today, there are doubts in every heart. After coming to the church, believe everyone. Terrible doubt over the husband. Terrible doubt over the wife. Terrible doubt over the children. And doubt over every others. Do you, every one of you have any doubts? If their family members are half an hour late, their pulse will increase. They start doubting. Do you have the doubts? Doubt is a terrible demon in our church today. A terrible doubt. People with the mobile phone, they have ninety-nine percent of doubt. When I came, they switched it off. After that, to find the mobile number, they have a deep research. Today, doubt is prevailing in the society. Doubt over the husband. Doubt over one's wife. And they even doubt their children. If you don't come out of the spirit of doubt, until your death, you will have a head like life. Today, many of us have definite doubts. Certain doubts are hopeful. We should be an open apostle. Moment others come in, if you switch off your mobile, if you do things like that, they will doubt even the more. They will shut the room, saying, "I am studying and studying, what are you doing?" And you need not shut the room for that. Is it not? You can just make your door a little closed and then read it. And you should not first keep place to doubts. Secondly, you should not become a person of doubts. The heart of a husband trusts her. That means the heart of the wife trusts in the husband. You should leave up to hope of others. It is when you try to hide and when you try to run away, that they have more doubts. That is why Pastor Anandraj would give beautiful things. Have you seen in solemnizing marriages, he would peel off the skin of the mother-in-law. And in one marriage, he made a mother-in-law stand up. She did not know what to do, somehow stood up because pastor said. And telling about the old fables. And thinking about the old things. Likewise, because doubt is a wave, when you think about many things, it will come in. In some houses, it is normal. Because ocean always have smooth waves in it. But in some houses, it is a terrible act. I know of a believer of our church. Don't know what is consecration, he will be in white and white twenty-four hours. He was a big clerk in a P W O team. His work spot is forty-five kilometers away from his house. When he goes out, he will lock the house. Only when he comes in the evening, he will open the house. Even he'll lock up the windows. And if you go and see if the sister is a superstar, it's none like that. Nothing like that. He was a very good believer. He will always be with the servants of God. He was the Sunday school headmaster. But this sister is locked up ever. This is a problem, starting when the general cannae is over, she will turn around and she will turn around. That sister had stuck up the mirror in the window and combed the hair, because of that, the doubt started and finally, she was locked up. And you may think, pastor is in the faith home, he doesn't know the path of he go through. The first point is stop walking that others may doubt you. Second point, avoid strange doubts. Or else, little by little, the waves will rise and finally break up your family. Very often, I tell an incident. That which I saw with my eyes. One sister could not hear. But she was a teacher. Her husband was working in a company. And he would drop her in the school. At the entrance of the school, the teachers and the children will wish her. Yes, I am all good. And this is a daily incident. But this mother could not hear it. She would call the son and ask, "When this teacher came, your father smiled." And the son said, "They only wished" and he said, "As I am okay, why does he wish every day?" Step by step, the doubts increased, they were spoiling their life. The whole family was lost. Do you have the doubts? Some say, "Pastor, say it well, I am seeing it in the spirit." Some others say, "We will not know." Waves are doubts. Doubts are waves, if you give place, it will stuck and break. And then God cannot rest in your life. You cannot reach the desired haven. If this doubt comes into you, your family will be in torment. And because of you, others cannot do the business. And they will run away home. They will move about without necessity. Doubt will begin in you. Turning to Jude thirteen. The waves which form out their shame. The waves forming out the shame. Jude verse thirteen. Yes, even telling out our own weakness is a wave. Something, it is a good habit of confessing things to others, but that is forming out the shame. If you tell out the shame, the weakness in your life, in your family life, then it will form out as wave one day. When somebody starts talking with them, they tell their whole history. And every son and every daughter will do it. Finally, when time passes away, it will come up as waves against them. The weakness in your life is your shame. Don't tell it out, only confess it to God. When time comes, I will give a message. How to confess? To whom to confess? Without knowing that, don't do it. Confession doesn't mean you have to confess in the church as a whole, but confess it to the related ones, some things confess to the servants of God and some other only to God. That which you have to say to God, don't tell it to the servants of God. That which you have to tell to the servants of God, don't tell it to wife and husband. There are verses for that, I will tell you. To whom? Should you confess? You need to know that. Don't confess in places you should not. When you make unnecessary confession, your boyage will not be ahead. Confession is sacred. It's an experience of burying your sins and finally, when God forgives, it is divine. He took everything being in Jericho. Now, the Lord is cast in his name. My son, confess and glorify God. Therefore, confession. When you accept that you are a sinner, God is glorified as holy. There are confessions you make to the parents, making to the husband and that which you should not make to the husbands. You being an adulterer, if you confess to God, God will forget, forgive and forget, but when you say to your husband, he will not forget it until his death. He is a man. Time will come and his human nature will be revealed. He is not perfect. He is not perfect in divinity. Therefore, you need to be very careful. Confession you need to make to God, do it only to him. If you have bitterness or grief, you can directly tell it to the related ones and say, "Forgive me." Some do not know what to do. Finally, your life will become nothing. Roaring waves which form out one shame. Telling about the failures in your life, finally, one day, it will be a wave taking you away. When this wave comes fast, it will close up your ship. Matthew eight twenty-four, we see, the waves have the power to even cover up the ship. It will make your faith nothing. Make him presence of God nothing. And he will not get Zion and Jerusalem. Therefore, let us be very careful in this. You can tell you are a sinner, but don't confess your sin in the streets. Preserve your divinity. Turning to Jonah two three. There, what is it said? Terrible waves were hitting against him. Waves and floods compass me about. Yes, this shows reproaches and change. Accusations. Accusing you unnecessarily. How many of you have such accusations today? And if they tell like that, then you are blessed. And if you have just accusations, set yours. And if you have just accusations set yourselves right. Unjustly accused then we are blessed. God will give us a grace. But for just accusation make ourselves right. Yes floods and waves may overflow. They will tell unnecessary things about us. After coming into the ministry even people in the street will approach. Even the people in the platform will accuse you. For some people they see the servants of God who have no one therefore they speak unnecessarily. You may think they are care of platform but they are care of God. Therefore understand it well. And you should not say this is a land of republic and we have. What you say if it is right we will change ourselves or else the judgment upon your family you cannot bear it. One servant of God left. There I was a junior brother. Old believer came bringing thirty rupees. He gave it to me. I was a junior brother. Because he stretched their hand with the change should I stand with my hands folded and said keep it at my feet? When I say they may keep it. But he was a very old believer. Therefore he opened up that note of ten rupees and twenty rupees. I was a junior brother. Just twenty one and a half years old. Twenty eight and a half years old. I just stretched my arm to get it. And he just slowed down. How will it be? He just slowed down and said I think you will also not go away. How will it be? He gave just rupees thirteen. I said. I believe God who called me is alive. Because he is alive I will also be here. Then you get it he said. Look at his revelation. What vision about the servants of God? And do you have the right to give your child for the ministry? And will a sign be born out of you? And after that you can see your children easy in somersaults. After doing that if he achieves God then you can tell me. Will your child reach Zion will he come out or is he going to come? I know where he is. I know where she is. Just think. Don't say do or say something as we like. Don't tell unnecessary accusations. I have seen all such people. And before my eyes I have seen the judgment. I myself have buried them. Why I tell this not that you may be afraid but waves may come up. But God who still at the waves is with us with you and with all of us. Do you have that power? Is God is looking at everything. I am standing in the altar and speaking. Waves may come. I have also known much about our believers. Am I telling all about that? It may be false accusation it may be just also. However how many people are here? How many have I kept? Is about your family about you I know many things but everyone have to give the account to the Lord. And you say don't send him for the area prayer then you come and conduct it. At least you write your name in the letter. I will make you take the area prayer. We are in the presence of God lead the habit of writing anonymous letter. You don't be a wave in the church. What right have we to blame the children of others? We are not at all worthy to accuse the children the wife the husband of other families. Don't falsely accuse anyone. If he would take the balance you and me cannot stand. In the church of God don't show your rowdism. If you do like that then you will fear and tremble. Even today he is. And I used to prepare this thing for the divine evening. What happened for you? What happened to you? A brother without his knowledge he spoke about the servants of God in two three families. And the water tanker it hit him. The lorry stood upon the man's thigh the driver looking at it he just fled away. Having his thigh under the lorry he started confessing Lord I unjustly accuse the servants of God. Those things are unnecessary. Again don't contact me. In the presence of God I tell this. Come get closer to God. Don't rise up waves for you. You yourself don't become a wave. And that way will take you away. The question that where is your God came and hit me as a wave. David said a great wave is roaring against me. All the chapter he says where is God? Because my enemies continually say where is thy God my tears have been my means. Today there are many questions. Why God did not hear you? Why still no answer? Why still no job? Why still not successful? Why still you go to the church? Such questions may rise as the waves. Jeremiah forty six. Verse seven and eight. Egyptian is aware. Power of Egypt is aware. What is Egypt's sin? Sin is aware. You may confess you may take the communion and get reconciled but it will fight again with us. Spirit of Egypt how is it? I will continue. I will spoil. My desire shall be satisfied. This is the spirits. Egyptian is a wave says the word of God. Power of wave power of sin tries to capture you. I tell to senior believers. Don't get back to your forsakenness. You remain an example to the fresh believers. Stand as a pillar for the truth. They will first look at you. They will look at your activities. Look at your prayer. They will look at your kindness. They will look at your love. They will look at your fellowship. They will look at your humanity. Therefore you have to survive. Don't be entangled in the wave of Egypt. Jeremiah fifty one fifty five. Babylon is aware. Babylon means confusion. Another meaning traversing. Another meaning the modernity. Another meaning pride. Another meaning nebuchadnezzar marinah. Another meaning nebuchadnezzar became a beast. Another meaning mother of heartless. Another meaning haddishnom. Babylon has seven meanings. These waves may be. We are the in the path of taking a cross. Our God whom we worship is a God who has no form no commonness no beauty and is massage was mad. Therefore we should not be entangled in these waves of Babylon in this luxury of the world. These waves may rise up. You should not be entangled in the love of the world. In the clutches of sin now. Questions may come but don't stumble. Reproaches and accusations may come but don't backslie. Don't change your track. Don't reveal out your shame at any time. Don't be entangled in the wave of doubts. Don't be entangled in the wave of debts. Don't be entangled in the wave of sorrow. But God who is almighty who will take you to the desired heaven is able to tread the waves. How much ever the waves may be just call out unto God and he will make it a calm. Close your eyes. Being hit and smitten by the waves how many of you are found with sorrow and tears? With various questions. Various conflicts of sin. With various beastly powers. With reproach. The powers of doubts. The sorrow of curse. The deadly conflict. What are the waves that are beaten against your family your children and your future? God who make the storm a calm is coming to amends. Let's close our eyes and be on our knees. God who desire that the God may still up the waves close your eyes. Our God is on our side. He knows your forepart is stuck. God knows you have taken up your anchors. God knows your hind part is broken. But still you have to stand before Caesar. He is able to space it into your faultless before the presence of his coming. What he has thought cannot be hidden. God you are able to do everything. You have the faith. You are counted to be worthy to stand before the son of man. Today if you close your eyes God will present you before the son of man. Your calling is precious. Anointing is precious. Don't be afraid of the waves. Don't be afraid of the waves. Yes a God who makes it a calm. Yes a God who smiles at it. Yes a God who rules by treading it. Whatever be the state in your life. Do not be afraid. God who walked upon the sea in the fourth night watch he is walking upon your problems today. I ask you. Also say waves are beating up lift up your hand. Conflict of sin. Conflict of modern. Conflict of other things. Conflict of reproach. Conflict of confusions. Doubts. I cannot do this. Do not be afraid. He who called you is coming towards you. Today God commands. Peace be shown. Amen amen amen. This is a problem of the church. People have a problem with this and that and that and that and that. Many people have a problem. I told you earlier. The one who called you is a warrior. I will look at him. Amen. I will look at him. I will look at him. Amen. You have a problem with this. The people of this church have a problem with this. The people of this church will fight for it. You have not a choice. Many questions and many problems have occurred. The Lord has come to fix the problem. I can go forward. I am not going to die in this. All the churches have a problem. But some churches have a problem. I am not going to die in this. The Lord is with us. I will tell you. I will tell you. Amen. Do not be afraid. The one who called you is coming to watch you. The one who called you is coming to watch you.